Good evening, I'd like to call to order the May 8th council meeting. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Spitzley.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in quorum, Councilmember Spatafor is absent.
With that, do we have anyone that would like to remember someone during this moment of meditation? Yes, Councilmember Spitzley.
I know it probably sounds cliche, but we had a lot of unfortunate events that happened over the weekend, and we had some here in the city of Lansing. I always, so if we could just, you know, remember those victims of violence over the weekend, not only across the country, but here in our city, I might appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, if we could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of April 10th and April 24th.
Vice President Garza.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th as written.
We have a motion for April 10th. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would move the meeting minute from April 24th as presented.
Have a motion for April 24th. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations.
Count.
Our first one is on Z3 2022, a number of addresses near Pennsylvania and Saginaw, Oakland.
Okay, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Is Mr. Hepler here? Could you come down to the well, please? So, what we're looking at right now is for multiple properties, we're rezoning from RMX residential mix to D2-2 urban flex. The purpose of the rezoning is to permit a multiple family residential development of up to 240 units in the area bounded by Prudence Street to the west, North Pennsylvania Avenue to the east, May Street to the north, and East Saginaw Street to the south. The project will be developed in phases. As an applicant, Mr. Hepler continues his efforts to obtain more properties in the area, and he will talk about that. This did go before the planning board, and the planning board did recommend approval of the rezoning. So, with that, if you don't mind, if you would like to just kind of give an overview of the project, we appreciate it.
Mr. Hepler, if you could. If you could make sure that the green light is on.
There we go, better. You know, this neighborhood has bordered our east property of Motor Wheel as a facility that was silent in the 70s, and we picked it up in 1999 of a 25-acre site. This is about, as I recall, five and a half acres of land assembled between land bank, which is, I believe, 21 parcels, and one house of those 20. Rest of them are vacant lots, 20 are vacant, one house resides on parcel. And I believe we have 19 parcels in total. There's 40 parcels within this boundary line that we're speaking of, and I believe there's 11 lots, five which are owner occupied, and six which are owned by landlords. Some individual landlords, some of these houses are packaged in 200 or 300 homes in the Lansing area that just happen to be a part of a financial package that, of a security instrument, so. But the neighborhood's really never done anything that we thought it would do next to the development of Prudence Tech Center and Motor Wheel. And it's struggled through three different crisis periods. And Saginaw traffic does not help at 19,000 cars a day and ambulances, Main Route to Sparrow, and Norda's, North Penn with the ambulances and Main Route. So, these single-family homes, bungalows mostly, and some two stories, and actually a couple three stories sprinkled in there, have been severed by M43, which happened in 1956. And the state highway department's already recognized it's not the greatest design through there. But nevertheless, we've lived with it for about 80 years, and some of these houses have, especially the homes you see on the 900 block of Saginaw and the 700 block of North Penn, really can't stand up to that kind of traffic, and no one's really reinvested in these homes. So, we started purchasing them about seven years ago as they came available. Somebody would put a house up for sale, and we would buy it. If a landlord put a house up for sale, we would buy it, inherit the lease in it. We had a lot of those over COVID. And we just feel that this neighborhood could be a better design in its particular situation geographically, where it could defend itself against the traffic and increase the capacity of housing in an attainable and sustainable way. So, we have a lot of work to do, public service, to make sure the storms and the sanitary and everything can be managed properly. But none of these monies, we don't wish to spend those until we know we have the proper zoning and density. So, it can remain the way it is. We could sell the homes back into the landlord market and let them fix them up and lease them out as stock, although a lot of the houses are really very unhealthy. And I'll give you example, the houses on Saginaw and Penn, as we took out the interiors of these houses, we found carpenter ants and termites and the lack of insulation and, you know, generally not high-quality, sustainable housing. And the utility bills must have been just ferocious in those three houses with no insulation in them. I was quite shocked. I've been saving old buildings, historical buildings, for a long time. In the period these houses were built in, you know, the economy was not good, and there wasn't a lot of high-quality material being used for them, so. We'd like to see a higher density to make sense of it, and we'd like to elevate ourselves against Saginaw and North Penn, against the traffic. And as we work our way back towards the neighborhood, start bringing the elevation down lower with townhouses, so that they are more in line architecturally with the houses that are already there. And the plan is very modular, so we've heard from, of those 11 lots that we don't have, none of them wanted to sell. We asked all of them, and when somebody tells us they don't want to sell, we take them at their word. But this is a modular plan, so if that house ever did come for sale, or someone else bought it, it would be, it would be easy to see that home get rezoned and additional four units or something take place on that parcel. So, our plan is not, has forethought to modulally expand in the neighborhood as the neighborhood sees fit. But the majority of the neighborhood would be redeveloped. It would be, you know, 80% of the land, so it would definitely have a new look and a sustainable look and an attainable price point. I hope that helped.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Hepler? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you for the explanation, and I'm going to oversimplify it. So, you're buying up a lot of houses that are old over there because you want to expand and make apartments, and have it rezoned to make apartments?
Townhouses and apartments, yep, combination.
And all you're asking for is a rezone. Is there going to be anything else that you're at, that you need to ask for for this project?
We don't know at this point, because we don't know what the infrastructure costs are going to be, but certainly we need to increase density to make it, make sense of it.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, because a lot of my colleagues and myself have heard a lot of things about different tax breaks, or brownfields, or anything like that, where it gets scrutinized a lot. So, if you come in at the best you can, that would be my advice.
If I, excuse me, well, I didn't catch that last part.
Well, if you, if you do ask for something, you try to not ask for the most, because that gets the most scrutiny if you're trying to.
Anything we would ask for, we would think that would be shared throughout that neighborhood and rezoned in any way. This is an opportunity for those homeowners to, if they wanted to rezon their home, to what, by the way, what I see is in alignment with the master plan, what the city wants to have happen. Half of that neighborhood is already zoned that direction. These are infill lots that haven't been zoned there. If the neighborhood wanted to participate in, let's say, change their own lot designation, they've raised the value of their home, because they've raised the value of the land itself. So, it's a good opportunity for everybody modularly to expand into this neighborhood and increase the housing base, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here. Have you reached out to the neighbors that live along May Street that are not going to sell and worked with them through their concerns at all?
We don't, their concerns, we were at the meeting at the planning board, and we said we're happy to have a meeting if they like to organize around you. I know Steve Purchases called you and left you an email, and he claims that you've not responded to him at this point.
Yeah, I didn't receive a call or an email.
I mean, Steve is there for you to discuss this and arrange it. We have shared office space, and we have a community room, and we thought that a charrette would be nice, but we need some basis to go ahead and invest in that charrette. And we haven't heard any formal, written, anything from you or the neighborhood that wants to sit down and do that. Now, these houses on the far side of May Street, we have not been interested in any of those, when I say far side, north side of May Street, and I think this is some of the constituents you're speaking of.
Yeah, the concern is blocking out the sun.
Well, there's three-story homes there that reach 36 feet tall. We're talking about DT2, and if my memory serves me right, this is 38 or 40 feet. We're talking about five to six feet more than what some of the existing homes sit there today. And we also said in planning that we didn't see ourselves being that tall back that deep to the north, that most of the height we wanted was to the south and to Pennsylvania and Saginaw. So, we don't want to dwarf the neighborhood, would just not look right. And secondly, May Street, we only have one, just two properties that we could move to the north and do anything with with setback, and they're not planned to be anything on those two lots. It's an entrance and a parking area, you know, with the right setbacks.
And then, you said affordable. What kind of price point are you looking?
I said attainable. I didn't say affordable. Affordable is for people and developers who do affordable housing. I don't do affordable housing. I do market-based housing. It's not my skill base, and I save that for people who do that.
I didn't hear a number?
I didn't hear, you have a question of a number for what?
Okay, what, attainable, what is the, what are you looking at for?
I would say a studio attainable, a good price point would be somewhere around 850 to 950 in a one-bedroom, somewhere between 1,100 and 1,200, and a two-bedroom, somewhere between 1,400 and 1,500, and a three-bedroom on upward. But there's not a big market for three bedrooms in the Lansing market for some reason. It tends to be weak, but that's just its personality.
All right, thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Hepler? My question would be, how many of these properties that you're looking at for the rezoning are currently occupied, whether rental or owner occupied?
We own all of them, so there's no owner occupied units. They would all be rentals. At one point in time, all of them were rentals, but the three on Saginaw and Penn are scheduled to come down as our agreement with the bank that we're bringing those down, because they're zoned, I believe correctly. So, those three will never come back online, although they did have licenses, you know, just a few months ago.
My concern is, how many people do we have living in the units currently?
Yeah.
Would have to find other properties to live in.
So, let me, I'll count up the occupied ones. It's probably the easiest for me. There's two in court right now, and the courts are taking a great deal of time and giving grace to all these people who are not paying rent. We're currently in the situation with two of them haven't paid rent for about 18 months. And then, I think there's five other homes that are paying rent, but all the rest are vacant, and we've been boarding them up over the last few weeks. We've boarded up probably six homes that have, people have either been asked by the court to leave or have found a new home. And we're not in a hurry with any of them. Generally, it takes quite a long time to get a house vacant.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, unless there's anything you want to finish up with?
Nope, just that it'd be, it'd be nice for people not to be chasing around $500 or $600 heating bills when they're looking for housing, so. I think this would definitely give Lansing a leg up on the bedroom communities.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is on the Stadium North project.
This is, if council remembers, we approved a pilot for this particular project. We had been asked about an update. We had invited the developer to come in and answer some questions. In your packet, in the red folder, you will see, or it was handed out to you during the committee meet, the council meeting, there was a response from the developer, and I'm going to go through those responses. And we also have Price Dobernik here. Price, if you could come up to the well, please. We asked the contractor, the companies the developer has contracted with for the work on the site. We were told that the general contractor is Orion Construction out of Grand Rapids. This is the same as it was when it was presented to council previously. This company constructs multiple, multi-family throughout Lansing and other states. More importantly, they have a tremendous amount of experience with MISTDA-funded tax credit housing that had, that many unique requirements. It says that Orion did a bid project locally in Lansing with the Lansing Builders Exchange. Additionally, they reached out to over 400 subcontractors, and within a 50-mile radius, bidding was open for several months. Prevailing wage was a requirement. Both union and non-union subcontractors were welcome to bid. During our request for a 7% pilot, some of council asked that we reopen the bidding due to the concerns that union labor did not get a chance to bid on the work. Therefore, we reopened the bidding and engaged trade unions, offering all interested parties to bid. Bidding was reopened for two months. The general contractor received only one additional bid. Unfortunately, it was $60,000 higher than the lowest, low bid, and therefore did not result in an award. After closing the bids the second time, the developer includes nearly 40% Lansing, Metro Lansing subcontractors. The remainder of the subcontractors are located within an 80 miles of the site. We asked for the number of local and state contractors, 40% plus local, 100% Michigan-based. We asked for verification that the contractors are paying their local city Lansing income tax. He said, "We've notified the general contractor to pass this request on to the subs." An update on the progress and the timeline for the projects. The wet spell in March, April has the site working slightly behind schedule. The brownfield work also, work is also expensive and delayed slightly by the weather. However, this was anticipated to take time, and the project is generally still on schedule. Leasing will begin in the fall of 2023, and the completion in the spring of 2024 is planned. An update on the Eagle Environmental Redemption, it's in progress and should be completed over the next month or so. An update on the 7% pilot that was granted by the city, the proceeds as provided by council is greatly appreciated and help make the project. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dobernik.
Okay, well, thank you, President Wood and City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight on Stadium North. Really hard to follow that email you just read. I hope to kind of give you the other side of the story. So, again, my name's Price Dobernik. I'm the business manager of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 333, based here in Lansing. I first want to speak to the bidding process. Orion Construction of Grand Rapids was hired by the developer to manage the project, as was just mentioned. They early on exclusively advertised bidding opportunities in the Grand Rapids Builders Exchange. As you can imagine, not many Lansing-based construction contractors spend a whole lot of time on the Grand Rapids Builders Exchange, looking for job opportunities here in Lansing. I also questioned the developer, specifically Pete Swigart, on the effort to reach out to local contractors to garner interest in the project, which is common practice in the construction industry. Mr. Swigart, to his credit, was honest in his follow-up with me. He stated to me that, to his dismay, no outreach was taken place locally in Lansing, and indeed the Grand Rapids Builders Exchange was exclusively used. At this point, the bids were already due, but the date was extended, and the project was then put on the Lansing Builders Exchange due to our efforts. The problem for my contractors was no specifications were posted for plumbing or mechanical on the Builders Exchange. When notified, Mr. Swigart told me, "They should just know how to do it, and cheaper is better." This is unheard of in a project of this size or even smaller projects. So, then I found myself encouraging local union contractors to bid plumbing and mechanical work for a job in which the original bid date had already come and gone, with some proposals from outside the area likely already turned in. This while there were no specifications to bid the job at all. As I have explained before to all of you, bidding is part of our job, but it costs real money, whether you get the job or not. Most are not going to waste the money if they don't feel there is a fair opportunity to garner some work. So, when you hear that there were no bidders locally, I feel in my opinion that it was by design, based on what I just shared with you. Once you all approved the incentive package for the project, Mr. Swigart no longer returned my calls. I simply, at the last conversation, I said, "Can I just get a list of the bid results and the numbers?" And he no longer returned my calls, nor did he share that information with me. As for the prevailing wage talking point that you may or may not hear, the plumber and pipe fitter rate in the specifications is $21.99 an hour less than what a union journeyman plumber makes in Lansing. It's hardly a fair matchup and possibly plays into the need for affordable housing in the first place. To date, to the best of my knowledge, the following contractors are on-site or will be soon, even though they were not willing to share these names with you. Orion Construction from Grand Rapids, Michigan. CNR Electric from Shepherd, Michigan. RLE Concrete from Grand Rapids, Michigan. Thorn Apple Excavation from Grand Rapids, Michigan. Grand Rapids Fire Protection, Grand Rapids, Michigan. And last but not least, American Plumbing from DeWitt Township. American Plumbing is no stranger to our union. They do not provide a defined benefit pension. They do not provide 100% employer-paid healthcare, and do not have a DOL registered apprenticeship program. How do I know all of this? Many of their past employees are now members of our local union, and they receive those benefits currently from our signatory contractors that were not allowed to be a part of this I would ask all of you to think of the irony, providing a high-dollar tax incentives to build affordable housing for folks in Lansing that can't get by on their own. Then, instead of promoting job opportunities for that same population, you give out out-of-town developers and many contractors from outside the Lansing area those same jobs with very little accountability. The same jobs that were dangling in front of all of you when the Bill of Goods was sold to you when they were looking for your vote. If given a chance, I guarantee you the residents of Lansing would prefer a hand up and not a hand out. Those jobs could have meant something, and it could have changed somebody's direction in life. Next, what I want to discuss is the Lansing income tax and the so-called Lansing Labor Agreement. First, the labor agreement is somewhat laughable, because it's not always applied, and even more laughable is no one from the administration manages it. Basically, guys like me have to do the work and then hope that someone at City Hall picks up the phone. There is very little to no follow-up or oversight once all of you sign off on a project. In fact, I believe the developer not showing up tonight says a lot. They were asked to do so. I think it says a lot about them not being here and the lack of respect they have for city council and the leadership. They basically have what they need from you, and they've moved on. The income tax. This administration has no issue sending a city employee out to shovel an elderly lady's snow off her sidewalk and then give her a fine, or sending a city employee out to mow a resident's yard who may be on hard times and then sending them a fine as well. Yet, you all are asked to support projects from time to time with the promise of jobs, both construction and permanent. While the elderly lady pays her fine for the snow, developers thrive with large incentives and don't even have to disclose who is working on their sites. And the city doesn't care enough to assign a staff member to at least follow up. In my opinion, the city needs a full-time employee with some authority to oversee all development agreements, oversee them in every sense, audit income taxes, enforce wage requirements, enforce licensing requirements, and at the end of the project, report back to council on the jobs that were created, and if the project was built in line with what was pitched at the time of the approval. In closing, as you all work on the budget, please think of this project and others. Maybe now is the time to rethink how we do things in Lansing when it comes to developments, especially with developers that have no history in our city. I appreciate your time, and with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Dobernik? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Dobernik. So, I'm just a little bit, I understand your position fully as the representative of 333 Plumbers, Pipe Fitters. Jeremy, you're also part of that, right? So, I just don't know what, so you're speaking on the public hearing in opposition of Stadium North?
Well, what I would simply say is, yes, I'm speaking to Stadium North. My hope was that the developer would be kind enough to spend a little bit of time with us this evening to answer some of the questions that I have, because what they submitted to council that President Wood just went over does not align with my real-life experience, both dealing with the developer and Orion Construction. So, I was hoping they would be here tonight to be able to make the case that they followed what they said they were going to do, and obviously, they didn't care enough to show up.
Thank you. And, you know, just because you're here, you availed yourself, and my only, it's not a problem, because it's just how things work in local politics, but I know, like, your union and yourself is like a big donor to a lot of people, not me, a lot of people that's up here. And it's like, then you come and you, you know, put your side out there, you get, you get a nice setup to do it, you read from your thing, but it's still like coming off political to me, only because of your position and just, even if there's no influence, and I'm not saying there is, it's just how it looks to people on the outside. And I sometimes feel like I'm on the outside, because I don't have great conversations with everybody in the unions, and I just kind of hear about things as they come. So, as they come, I'm going to ask a question. So as they come, I'm going to ask the questions, and then it's just so much contributions, like it all matters, and it really like affects things, because when a candidate or somebody has so much money, they can just basically win an election. So it's just all coming together, and I understand the local labor, but didn't we just pass something that said if a local group is outbid that they can, by a certain percent, that they can reapply? Is that, that wouldn't help what's going on?
Sir, that, Councilmember Jackson, that's for city projects. That's us paying for the work to be done. This isn't for development projects like that.
So what is it that we passed that we're still considering?
Again, the proposal that came from Mayor Shore and from Councilmember Spatafor was for work that we hire people to do, building, the public safety building, building the community media building. Those are things, building fire stations. Those are things that we're using our tax dollars for that will be part of the local bidders ordinance.
I guess remind me, Stadium North is low-income, and what they asked, was it a brownfield? Was it a pilot? I'm trying to remember.
They did not get a brownfield. What they got was an Eagle Environmental remediation of a million dollars from the state, but they got a seven percent pilot.
Again, we, that's what we voted for.
That's, well, some of you did, I didn't, but.
But that's what passed?
Yeah. And I just want to clarify something before I take, I know I've got Councilmember Brown, Vice President Garza, and Councilmember Hussein. I put this, Carol Wood put this on the agenda, and the reason I thought it was important was when these issues were brought to us, we were also dealing with another issue in public safety, and that is 820 and 720 West Ottawa, which are pilots that we approved. Those pilots are brand-new construction. If you go down Ottawa, you're looking across from the Supreme Court Building, guess what? They don't have a certificate of rental. They've chosen since July of 2022 not to get a certificate of rental, but yet they have a pilot, which means they're paying less than what normal property taxes are. So when these items are coming, it's incumbent upon us to look at and try to figure out how we can do better. Councilmember Brown, and then Vice President Garza, and Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here, Price. I hear what you're saying, and I know that we have spoke about that, and I really appreciate you being vocal, because I was quite shocked when things had changed versus what everybody had discussed. My question to you is, working with the administration, has there been, you're talking about having a staff, so there's been no like follow-up to the changes? I mean, could you just clarify, working with the city, you know, what's taking place?
Well, I will say, first of all, I'm certainly passionate about what I do, and that probably came across a little bit. I work with Mayor Shore, as well as many of you, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future, but there needs to be a fix. There are great developers in Lansing. I am pro-development. I represent a large sector of folks that build things for a living. If I was not pro-development, I probably shouldn't have my job. I just want things to be done responsibly. To Councilmember Jackson's point, the bidding process, I think you mentioned a discount or a percentage, they couldn't even tell us, or would not tell us, what the numbers were. I couldn't even get the bid results, who bid it, what the numbers were, anything. So yeah, I look forward, and I'm open to any ideas, right? I just pitched a few tonight, but something needs to give. You know, we're doing our part in the community, whether it's volunteering, we're working with the Lansing School District on apprenticeship programs, teaching kids, we don't charge the district a dime. We're doing our part. And so when our members are put to work and our contractors are put to work, there is a trickle-down effect in the community, and it allows us to do our part more than we even are doing it today. So I just look forward to a solution, not here to look for fights.
Hey, I've got Vice President Garza and Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Council President. And I don't, I don't have any questions, I just more of a statement. I didn't support this project, because other trades have reached out to me in the past about Orion Construction, and that they're historically known for misclassifying workers as independent contractors and not paying their income tax here in the city of Lansing. So I didn't support this project because of that, and we have nobody on staff and payroll, which we used to have in HRCS, that used to go onto job sites and make sure that the workers were paying into our income tax. So I don't understand why we aren't currently doing that anymore. I mean, that's revenue that we could be helping get out of this deficit.
I've got Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Spitzley, and the Mayor Shore.
Yeah, just for the record, I wanted to say, first and foremost, in the lead-up to the vote on the seven percent, Price, I don't believe you and I ever talked about this development. I don't think you tried to lobby me or anyone else at this dais, and folks can go ahead and foil you, my emails and my calls, and here's why I voted no, because I did my homework. And the reality is, after we did our homework, three of us, on this particular developer, and we had heard about who they were looking to or who they had historically contracted with, we knew this would be the reality. We knew that they wouldn't be here. We knew it would be a bait-and-switch. We are not surprised at all that they have circumvented the provisions legally, mind you, but circumvented just enough to not get into legal trouble, where we don't have a lot of clawback with regards to revocation and things like that, but they certainly didn't do our local trades community any favors here. And so this is not surprising. What I'm really concerned about moving forward is, is what in perpetuity will the living conditions be for the people that are actually living in these properties? Because what I was also concerned about is who they were talking about potentially partnering with in terms of management and resource provision. And so if everything that we know up to this point is any indication in terms of what that place will be when it's fully operational, we have some folks that are going to be in serious trouble that are living on that property. So I just want to thank you for being here, I want to thank you for everything you do. I want to thank you for being a strong advocate for our local trades, and I want to thank you for not leaning on us, but believing in a number of us, that we are going to do our homework, and we will make the right vote when we come up to this dais. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley, and then Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm intrigued by the position that you were talking about, because I think that that is something that we desperately need in our planning economic development department. So I mean, we don't have a person that goes out and kind of does this type of follow-up in the city at this point, is that what you're saying? Because I think that that is something that is, or that solely does it, let's say that, that solely does it, because I do think that that is a deficit if we don't.
So if that person exists, I would like to know who they are. I have tried to identify such a person. I've been asking that question, going back all the way to Skyview, who some of you were here and some of you weren't, that job was pretty bad. We couldn't get a list of people that ever worked on that job. I tried, because I knew where a lot of them were coming from, and I was positive that they were not paying. So no, I think that that person could be instrumental, I think there could be revenue generated, I think a level playing ground could be established, and people know that if they're going to come to Lansing, they at least have to play by the same rules that good-abiding contractors pay by that they're competing against.
Madam President, thank you. And just to add, when we did have EDC here, Carl Dorsheimer, was one of the questions I asked him, based on the fact that with LEAP, it was self-reporting, and he indicated that they just don't have the staff, again, to do that. So with that, Mayor Shore.
Yeah, we, let me give a little bit of context. Thank you, Price. Price and I have had this conversation, I'm not offended by anything you said, you're an advocate. So Barb Kimmel is here, so we can always address questions to her. We have, when I came in, the big question was UDAs, and we put local labor language into UDAs, which deals with developers for the most part prevailing wage, you know, requirements that we had. And with the UDAs, I think in my second year, we updated that for, we added local labor requirements. And as part of that, we actually have a company that was union-recommended that does the checking. So with UDAs, everyone we've done since probably my second year, I think starting with Red Cedar, we do have a company that comes in and checks. They do random checks, it's not a city employee. Now, it's also my understanding that we do have someone in HRCS that checks on prevailing wage. I need to figure out, I think it's Guadalupe, but I'm not 100% sure, so I need to talk to Kim and get that clarified. I texted her, she didn't answer. We also, we do have very strict procedures in the UDA on income, I'm sorry? Universal, thank you, thank you, Councilman Brown. For those who are watching, thank you, Councilman Brown. A UDA is a universal development agreement, which is what developers, what we make them sign when we do projects with them. It's initiated by an executive order. When I first came in, I worked with council leadership, Councilwoman Wood at the time, we updated that to make sure that we had local labor requirements. We also updated it to require that developers are telling all of their subs that they have to pay income tax, and they have to provide lists, and then our finance folks track back those lists to make sure that we are collecting income tax. Now, I say all that not to influence this conversation, because in my five years, it's never come up with pilots, and after seeing this situation, when Price informed me about this, Barb and I had a conversation, and we're going to be implementing that with pilots as well. We can do a pilot by right at 10%, anything below that comes to council, but we're going to be doing, using the language from development agreements for both local labor, the local labor requirements that we have, which will be very similar along with the checkers, and that, you know, there's a cost, but that's okay, we build it in, they got to pay it, and to make sure that they're checking on income tax. So in terms of the moving forward, it's just, that has never even been a consideration, but it is now, after hearing this situation, and we'll be moving forward on that, and then I'll find out about the staffer at HRCS who does prevailing wage, but not income tax, income tax is done through finance, and through treasury, through treasury. Thank you.
Sir.
Yes, so thanks, Mayor Shore. And like I said, I do appreciate some of the steps you've taken. It's my understanding, though, as far as wage oversight, that that needs to be triggered by somebody like myself, and that there's nobody actively checking the books on a regular basis. And again, if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be wrong, I would just like to know who to call. So again, I think this was a good conversation, I appreciate everybody's time, and if there's no further questions, I'll step in.
Thank you, Price.
Okay, thanks.
The one thing, Mayor Shore, that I would say is, again, you heard me just say that we have a new development that did not get their certificate for rental property, and this is not acceptable, even though, yes, we know that they're living in safe housing, because it was just built, and there was a sign-off from all of the departments, they still did not have a certificate.
Yeah, and that's being worked out with MISTHA right now. There's a challenge on, it's a long story. There's a, we are very familiar with their allegation that we disagree with in terms of individual versus total. They, I don't want to say too much, because I'm not sure what is legal and what's not, but they are suggesting that they should be paying one inspection fee for the entire property. We are suggesting they should be paying per unit, because that's how they created it, they condoized, because it's a tax benefit, but because of that, we believe they should be paying per unit, they should be, they should be paying for the full entity. So we are, we're going back and forth with them. Again, we have inspected, but.
Well, the easiest way to settle that is tell MISTHA we won't do pilots anymore, if that's how they're going to handle their stuff.
Yeah, we're working back and forth. I don't think it's the developers, not necessarily MISTHA, I know they're involved, so there's a lot of conversation going on with that, but we are.
Well, the developers could make the payments. Okay, with that, let's move on.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments. Councilmember, or Vice President Garza, and then Councilmember Hussein.
All right, thank you, Council President. I just want to say, thank you all who came out to I Love My City event last Sunday. It was well-attended, over 150 people showed up, took on various beautification projects over the city, and I'm just being proud to be a part of it, and want to thank the South Church of Nazarene for hosting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so I have a few. First, I want to thank folks that came out this past Thursday, so it was May 4th, to our Logan Square Community Conversation that was actually held onsite. We, right now, folks are, such as the LEDC, the MEDC, the community, or I'm sorry, the Corridor Improvement Authority, as well as the property owners, are actually working with a group called Place and Main Consultants, to take a look at the property, to take a look at the area, to conduct market analyses, they've done geo-fencing, they've just done a number of things. And the idea is to put together a redevelopment strategy by the end of June, and that redevelopment strategy is to have short-term, midterm, long-term goals, and a number of options in terms of what can actually be done at that site realistically. With that being said, a huge piece of that is public input, right? We have absolutely determined, which we always knew, that that is an economically viable site, that unfortunately, we as a city, probably for the past two to three decades, have allowed some folks, particularly folks from out-of-town, to come in, speculators, grab properties, sit on them, and then these properties have essentially rotted down the vine. And what ends up happening, unfortunately, is that becomes the symbol to folks that that must be what the neighborhoods are behind, those corridors and those districts. And so there's been all this discussion about how there is no economic viability in that area, and you're never going to be able to do anything with that site. What I took from that meeting, the number one thing I took from that meeting, is that that is absolutely untrue. So the median household income is strong in that area, the market potential is strong in that area, and that is incredibly exciting. But again, a huge piece of this development strategy is what would the people in that area actually support? And so it's absolutely critical that we actually have people out engaging and providing that public input, and we have now had really three meetings on this. We had a meeting back in January, where almost 130 people were on hand. We had a meeting this past Thursday, where about 85 people were on hand. I had a constituent contact meeting where we discussed this, where we had nearly 50 people on hand. And offline, I actually talked to the consultants, and they said they have, they've worked on a number of these types of community efforts, and they have never seen that type of commitment from a community. And so again, telling, but as the Southwest representative on City Council, I'm not at all surprised. So I want to thank folks that have come out, I want to thank folks that have been a part of that, and I want to also, on the record, say that the real work starts in July. And so once that redevelopment strategy is done, I hope folks hold us accountable, our Corridor Improvement Authority accountable, the administration accountable, the LEDC accountable, and even the MEDC, because they have been involved in this, and they have given people hope, and so nobody can now walk away from the table, right? Second piece is that I have a constituent contact meeting. You do not have to be a Southwest Lansing resident, but it is a third ward constituent contact meeting that will be this Saturday, 10 to 12 noon. We are meeting at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, which is located at 5825 Wise Road, and we're going to be talking about the all-important piece of economic development. We will actually have the Lansing Economic Development Corporation on hand to speak to market realities in South Lansing, efforts that are ongoing right now to truly market our commercial corridors, our districts, to make sure that we are tracking investment, that we're supporting right now our small businesses that are in place, that we're adding to livability throughout our community and the like. And then we're also going to, we've actually secured commitments from a number of owners that really own properties that are paramount to Southwest Lansing and advancing Southwest Lansing. So I think of offhand, 820 West Miller, at Miller and Washington, I think of obviously the school site at Pleasant Grove and Homes, I think of 3700 South Waverly, which is just southwest of Homes in South Waverly, and I mean, the list goes on. And so we have a commitment from a number of those folks to be on hand, so we can find out, number one, what their plans are for those, you know, all-important properties, but then also, we can talk about how we can potentially support some forward advancement at those locations. So again, that's this Saturday, 10 to 12 noon. We certainly hope that you will consider coming out. I was also asked to make an announcement, there is an MDOT meeting, that is Department of Transportation meeting, and this is pertaining to the MDOT signal change of the light at West Saginaw in North Genesee. The meeting will take place Tuesday, May 16th. This will be at 6:30 PM. So again, that's Tuesday, May 16th at 6:30 PM. My understanding is that this is actually going to take place, it's changed a number of times. I believe it's the auditorium at Sexton High School.
I think it's cafeteria.
It's the cafeteria. So the cafeteria, cafeteria, they want you to enter into the parking lot from Michigan, correct? They want you to park on the west side of the school, and then you said they want you to enter into what door?
The cafeteria's in the back.
Okay, so the cafeteria is in the back. There's been a lot of concern expressed, we've actually taken this issue up on public safety, but there's been a lot of concern expressed by the neighbors at and around North Genesee and West Saginaw, where the signal changes have been made. So MDOT will be present to discuss the process, what's to be expected moving forward, but is also seeking input from the community. My understanding is we will have representatives from the city of Lansing, as well as the LPD, and I do believe Mr. Jackson will be on hand, is that correct? Mr. Jackson will be on hand, is that correct? Okay, so Councilman Jackson will be there, and potentially an at-large member or two. Again, please consider coming if you are impacted by this issue. Real quick to the mayor's office, I wanted to talk just very quickly about our boards and commissions, and the meeting agendas, and the minutes, and postings, and cancellations. We have to, we got to figure something out. I think we are meeting certainly the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, but I think best practice is to maybe go above and beyond. And what I mean by that is even as a councilperson, when I'm trying to find out, you know, what is being done in front of some of these boards and commissions, what are they looking at? When I'm trying to go back and read minutes, because we do that, right, or we'd like to do that, I can never find anything. So, things are just not being posted. There are some, and we, I had to, you know, be versed a little bit by our city attorney and our city clerk, as well as my own office manager, on who's uploading, or supposed to be uploading those things, in terms of the Agenda Center. So, who's responsible? And frankly, it sounds like there are respective people within respective departments that do that work. Some do a better job than others. And so, that's the first piece. But the other piece is, I have now, I have now showed up to meetings that have been canceled, where there had been no notice outside of maybe a posting outside of City Hall, no social media posting, no Agenda Center posting, no, I mean, nothing. I actually showed up to one meeting with Jim, and we thought we were going to be presenting, and we were standing there at about 6:30. Meeting was supposed to start at 6:30, and somebody came up to him, inform us that the meeting had been canceled. I've also heard from another, a number of constituents that have actually made their way out to Neighbor Empowerment Center, or Foster Community Center, or only to find out that the meeting had been canceled, and there really had been, again, outside of that notice outside of City Hall. So, we are meeting the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, but are we going above and beyond to make sure that we're being transparent with that? So, what I would like is maybe for us to take this up in the leadership, in terms of, you know, maybe some ideas, because I certainly think we can do better. And then lastly, this one I'm pretty angry about. We have Carol Wood and myself, and then certain people on council through the years, we have been absolutely locked in, in terms of the intersection of Pleasant Grove and Homes, right? We have done everything we possibly can legislatively. We've worked with the city attorney's office, and specifically, I'm talking about the plaza that is southwest of Pleasant Grove and Homes, and specifically, I'm talking about the owner of the plaza, and I'm talking about Vons Liquor Store. But we have done everything we possibly can. And again, we have had special public safety meetings on this particular plaza. We have hauled in the owners, and frankly, you should know that, I mean, it's just, it's part of the game. Ownership changes often, the liquor license is transferred often, but they're all the same family, right? So, that's how it works, these are the things. We've done that. As a community, we have done everything we possibly can. We have done a number of community cleanups over there. We have literally bought land, advocated, obviously, as you know, for public art. We've installed public art. We've worked with the city on CDBG dollars, and frankly, part of that was just to make place, and also to try to acquire some of the land from this, you know, particular negligent property owner, so they would have less that they needed to manage. I have personally been up there and spent hours upon hours upon hours documenting the liquor bottles and the onsite consumption, and the fact that they're still selling Lucy cigarettes and Vons, and they're still selling to underage children, and they're still selling Styrofoam cups to make it incredibly easy for folks to sit. It used to be the Jersey barriers. We even worked with our Invest Health program to remove the Jersey barriers for the planners, but now those have just become receptacles for liquor bottles, right? My frustration is that I've done everything you all have asked me to do. I have documented it, I have put it into 311, I have put it, you know, called, or put it into Lansing Connect, I have sent documentation, photos to our city attorney's office. I was onsite yesterday, and I collected 173 bottles, and I have them in my back office. I'll be delivering those to you. Because at this point, I don't know if you all need hard evidence, but there are 173 pieces of evidence in terms of a liquor violation, a liquor license violation, in those bags in my office. What really bothers me about this, one of the reasons I'm on council, is that I had, and I'm sorry, I'm taking so much time.
No, no.
One of the reasons I'm on council is I had started a program at Waverly Middle School called Foundations, and we were working with some of the most vulnerable and at-risk young men in our school. And the idea was to figure out a way to reduce their suspensions because they were on the path to expulsion, and make sure that they were actually in class learning every day. And we poured a lot into these kids. These are eighth graders. One of my young men, who, again, we had poured a ton into, ended up about a year later, coming out of Vons. I was driving by, and I noticed he didn't have a snack bag on him, he didn't have anything of that nature. And so, I pulled in the parking lot, and I was talking to him, and through a little investigation, found out he had just been in there to buy tobacco products and blunt sticks. 15 years old, right? And it dawned upon me that no matter how hard we're working, every single day in those schools, these kids still go back to their community. And I'm troubled that I have continued to bring this issue forward, and again, do you need additional toolboxes? Do you need us to flood the room? We've even brought in liquor control commissioners, right? And yet, this is still happening. And as a latchkey kid, I spent most of my time in and around that intersection, but that was when we had Terra Novas, and that's when we had reputable actors, and that's when we had, and although I was growing up in hut housing, I didn't know I was poor, and I certainly didn't know I lived in a poor community. And you know why? Because we didn't have that kind of nonsense that was allowed. So, it never factored into my normalcy. I am struggling with the fact that that has been allowed to, we just shut down an illegal gambling establishment at that location last week, right? And I had to report that. What are we, I, somebody needs to tell me what the plan and strategy, we have good reputable businesses there. We have a good, strong barber shop, we have a good restaurant there, right? We have another individual there that is trying to do something, I think respectable out of his suite. That's, I mean, they've made an investment in Southwest Lansing, and they're dealing with that as business owners. We had Sam Smooth there that had an incredible, as a matter of fact, it was a site, he put a ton of money into that suite where they just had the illegal gambling establishment shut down. And he left because of the onsite consumption, and because of the public urination, and because of the costing of his patrons, the list goes on and on. So, I'm asking you all, and again, I'll give you the evidence, but I can't continue to put stuff in a Lansing, we have agreements from property owners, right, that all these things are supposed to be happening, from security cameras to parking lot repairs to, and I'm telling you, nothing's been done. So, all I'm saying is, I'm losing my patience. We've had homicides at that plaza, I mean, the list goes on and on. Thank you.
Can we discuss this on Wednesday morning meeting that we're meeting?
We can, yes.
Okay.
Our leadership meeting.
Figure out a strategy that'll work. I thought I-
Oh, and I was going to ask, number one, the strategy has to be workable, and number two, we need to implement it. But I want people to understand, because frankly, that's my neighborhood, that's my commercial district, meaning myself, my neighbors, my, and folks are madder than hell. And this is just another example of, well, but this is just another example of a lot of work being done, as an example respectively and collectively, and yet people look at us and say, you're not doing anything.
Keeps happening at the same location.
Thank you.
And so, that's my problem, Jim.
Other council comments. I just want to remind the public that we are holding a special committee of a whole meeting on the 11th at the Foster Center at 5:30. This is an opportunity for the public to come out and talk to us about the budget, and their concerns with the budget, and things that they'd like to see happen. Again, that is on the 11th at 5:30 at the Foster Center in Room 213. 213, thank you.
And I would like to just take a moment. We have a new council intern with us here for the first time, so Grace Hockey will be assisting members of the public with getting signed in for the next few months, so let's welcome Grace. Thank you. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details of your event.
For the 16th year now, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be giving away free seed geraniums at Evergreen Cemetery on Saturday, May 20th, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. They'll be at the entrance to the cemetery, and these are geraniums that we are giving away to the public, that they may plant on graves within the three city-owned cemeteries, Evergreen and Mount Open North. This is one of our many services to the public as a nonprofit advocating for protecting, promoting, and prospering the three city-owned cemeteries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Good evening. I want to share with you, the Eastside Neighborhood Organization is going to have their third annual Eastside Summer Festival, August 26th, from 11 to 10. And I've got sponsor forums that I want to drop off for everyone. We have moved the event from Michigan Avenue. We are going to have it over at the Sears Parking Lot, because we're growing. We're going to end up with probably two stages, and we've got over 100 vendors, so we could use all the support we can get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Erica Lynn from the Village Lansing. We have our fourth annual citywide open house celebration that will be happening on June 4th, that's Sunday. That is the same day as the Lansing School District commencement ceremonies. This will be our fourth year in a row. It is an open house style of celebration that is held in conjunction to honor our Lansing School District students graduating, and it is held on the Capitol Lawn, so we'll be out there from 9:00 AM until the last graduate leaves. We do that for Lansing Sexton, Everett, Eastern, as well as the Adult Ed. So, if you want to come out, absolutely come out. We'll be there all day. There'll be a DJ, food, giveaways, games, lawn-style games. And then also, we are going to have vendors, I guess you could call them. So, if you know anyone, or you yourself is interested in participating in some way, we basically have people that have information or something meaningful to offer a graduating senior onsite. We do this, Lansing Promise partners with us on this, and already, we've got United States Army signed on, we have MSU, FCU, going to be talking about college accounts, Inland County Health Department, we've got Michigan Student Aid, CAPCAN, Capital Area College Access Network. So, they'll all be onsite. Again, it's an opportunity to talk to a graduating senior if you have something useful, meaningful to offer them, and of course, bring swag. We are also still taking sponsorships, so you can support the event monetarily, or if you have an in-kind type of donation, anything that you think a grad would love. We do lots of cash prize giveaways, we do gift cards, we do baskets that they can take off to college or into a new apartment. So, anything you can think of that is graduating senior, this is our time to honor our Lansing School District graduates. That's Sunday, June 4th, Village Lansing, on the Capitol Lawn.
Thank you. Other community events? Seeing none, we'll go to, I'll call a closing of signup for public comment on legislative matters, as well as, so that show cause hearings is the green form, if you received a notice from the city on a show cause hearing. And then, the blue form is for items seven through 24 on the council agenda, and it does include the special ceremony presentation as well. That is the blue form. We'll give you about another minute to jump up and see, Grace, a minute or less, please. And at this time, we're to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schor.
All right, thank you. A few things to bring up. One, I am excited to report that today, LPD swore in six new police officers, which is good news. We're anticipating onboarding another four officers this month, two academy recruits and two lateral officers, and we're going to continue hiring experienced officers throughout the year. We had a very successful recruiting campaign for LPD, so we are planning to send 30 recruits to the Police Academy in August, which again, will be great for us. So, our total efforts in 2023 could lead to the hiring of between 45 and 50 new officers before year end, which would get us fully staffed up. Certainly, we're going to continue that push, because we'll have vacancies next year and 2025, so we'll continue those pushes. But I want to thank our chief, our HR, and CCLP, the contract that we passed certainly has been very helpful. So, I'm excited about that. Our citizen academy applications will be available starting May 17th, and August 15th is when the session starts. And then on 5-1-7 day on May 17th, Moneyball will be opening on the west side on Saginaw. If you haven't been by there, you see a lot of change going on on that corridor, very exciting to see Moneyball opening up. Strange Matters got a place over there, you know, we're going to see that Park Furniture Building rehab, so a lot coming on the west side on that corridor. So, join us at the Moneyball opening on 5-1-7 day. And then I want to congratulate the new vendors at the Middle Village Micro Market. We've got a new cohort in, so we're excited to see all of those folks and the ones who are leaving, who are going to be going into brick and mortar buildings. So, that's good news, to see that succeed. You already heard, so I won't go into it, but I want to thank the I Love My City folks for all they did down at South Naz, wonderful event, great things going on. I drove past a variety of them, I had two other events, so I couldn't stop and help, but it was incredible, great turnout. I want to congratulate ENO on their 50th anniversary. It's exciting to have a neighborhood organization that's got 50 years and is still growing strong. Thank you to everybody who participated in our Ramadan celebration, the mayor's annual Ramadan celebration. That was just a fantastic event, diversity, all kinds of religions, but it was great to show off how we celebrate those of need, and we help them, and we provide those who are hungry. We raised $20,000 for the Food Bank to show that we are going to provide food for the hungry. And then finally, you already heard about Logan Square. I thought that was a tremendous job that was done by Place and Main, and the LEDC, it's exactly what we were hoping for, citizens to see the options at Logan Square, to see that it is economically viable. They talked about the billions of dollars that are generated in that area, to figure out what we can do, and then move forward with a plan. So, lots of good things happening, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are to public comment. First, we are to show cause hearings. We have three show cause hearings tonight, items four, five, and six, make safe or demolish for the, make safe or demolish for the owners of 1020 Woodbine, 318 Clifford Street, and 1309 West Chiawasi Street.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so just very quickly on all three. The first is, again, for the property at 1020 Woodbine Avenue. The listed taxpayers are Kyle Lupin, this is a fire damaged property. The SEV of the home, or the state equalized value, is 8,500, so the fire did cause near total loss. You have the pictures are on the screen. The estimated cost of repairs has been determined to be about $82,000. Original red tag date was May 24th of 2022. This was submitted in the demo on January 21st, no, sorry, 23rd of 2023. The demo board took a look at this on the 23rd of February, and then there was an order by the demo board 30 days later, as no permits had been pulled, no work had been done. That is still the case with this particular property. In terms of 318 Clifford Street, I'll give you just a second to change the pictures. 318 Clifford Street, the listed taxpayers, Daniel D. and Kimberly Dudley. The SEV of this home is 37,500, and the estimated cost of repairs is determined to be about $81,000. The original red tag date was actually back in 2011, with violations sent on both August 22nd of 2011, and then again, 11 years later, on April 28th of 2022. This was submitted in the demo on October 13th of last year. Demo board took a look at this February of this year, and there was an order by the demo board to make safe or demolish, and since that did not occur, it was referred to this body for this show cause hearing. And then lastly, we have a property at 1309 West Chiawasi Street. The listed taxpayer is Emily Childress. This is, has been determined to be unsafe. This is also a fire damaged home. We have an SEV of 56,500, estimated cost of repairs estimated to be about $128,000. Original red tag date was March 2017, submitted in a demo later that year. There was a show cause hearing that year. There was some work done, so they actually paused the process, and then once again, the progress had essentially stalled out, so this was kind of reactivated, if you will. And so, there was another demo board, show cause- show cause hearing February of this year. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have on the show cause hearings Megan Dowell and Ted O'Dell. Ted O'Dell. Megan is first, and then Ted O'Dell.
Hello. My name is Megan Dowell. This is actually my first city council meeting, so I do apologize for any ineptitude on my half. I am requesting an extension on the demolition of 1309 West Chiawasi. I did recently submit a grant application for the Competitive Housing Trust Fund. And upon issuance of that grant, I would like to attempt to fix this house. We do have a construction schedule as well as the amounts, the expense budget that we believe would take to fix this house. And as a licensed builder, I would very much like to have the opportunity to try and help with low income housing for this property. I don't really know what else to say. So that was it for me.
Thank you. This will be going back to the Public Safety Committee, and that meeting is...
Give me one second. Sorry. The meeting is, sorry, May 16th.
May 16th at 3:30 here in the back of the council chambers. And at that point, you can make your presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And next, we have Ted O'Dell.
Good evening. My name is Ted O'Dell. I live at 1310 West Chiawasi Street, directly across the street from 1309. I know Councilman Hussein had mentioned a red tag date, which I think was 2017, thereabouts. But, okay. But in reality, this issue in our neighborhood has been going on since St. Patrick's Day six years ago, when the house burned. The family who used to live there were wonderful people. The property has essentially been abandoned. It's been completely stripped out to the studs. It's been an eyesore for the neighbors since, for the last six years. And drawing on my previous experience as a city manager, township supervisor, and eight years as a planning commissioner in other communities, I can tell you this, this is not a project that should go forward. The property should definitely be demolished as recommended by the proper boards and commissions of the city. And we, living directly across the street, would like to see the house come down. It's a shame. It was a big house, but it's unfortunately gutted to the studs. There's nothing left. The back third of the house is still scarred from the fire. And I know a number of our neighbors have written letters or emails to our council member, Jackson. We've spoken with the mayor on several occasions. So they sort of know this has been going on for quite a while. But at this point, we just think it's gone on fire too long, and it's time to bring it to an end. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the referral of show cause hearings for number four, five, and six?
They'll all go back to Public Safety Committee.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And as I indicated, that's items seven through 24 on the agenda, which includes four public hearings. One is the fiscal year 23-24 budget. One is SLU 1 of 2023, special land use permit for 109 East Randolph for a state licensed adult foster care group home. And Z3 2023, 4111 Aurelius Road rezoning. And then Z3 2023, which is the one that we had the special ceremony and heard some detail about.
Okay. First, Vice President Garcia.
All right. Thank you, Council President. So this is the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. This budget is for 927 employees, seven more than last year's. The citywide budget consists of $275 million. The general fund budget of revenues of 161.2 million dollars, expenditures of $163.9 million, using of one-time ARPA funds of $8,287,500 and $2,672,033 of the general fund reserves or the rainy day funds.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. SLU 1-2023, special land use permit for 109 East Randolph Street for a state licensed adult foster care. This was, this is the second time. This has come before council. The first time, this is a different owner. This is a small group home with a maximum capacity of 12 residents. It used to be home for the nuns who serviced the church directly behind it. Let's see. Questions that were asked were for parking. And they've been working with the church to help with parking. They've also, I think that's it for that one. So that's the scheduled public hearing for that one.
And then if you do Aurelius, we've already had an explanation for...
Yes. No, actually, we had for number 10. So we had the explanation for number 10.
Number 10.
Right. So for, yeah, I'm sorry. Z-1-2023, 4111 Aurelius Road, resoning it from MX-1, Neighborhood Mixed Use Center R2, R-2 Suburban Detached. This is unique because this is the only home in that area that is, at this point, zoned MX-1 because of the uniform coating rezone. It is actually non-conforming. So if this house was burned over 50%, it would not be able to be rebuilt because the current zone designation for that home does not exist anymore. Also, if you wanted to do an expansion on the home, you would not be able to because of the rezone, which also makes it a little bit more difficult to sell. So we're just correcting it to make it consistent with the rezoning and the neighboring properties. Thank you. And then 10, we did have a presentation on Z-3-2023. Thank you.
Okay. Our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Mike Lynn.
Well, I'm going to talk briefly about the Saginaw Mae Street, Pennsylvania potential project for that area. And on one hand, I think it's a good thing. And on the other, I have concerns and questions. First off, the contractor, the builder, Harry Heffler, he's done a pretty good job, from what I could tell, with Pruden Lofts and motor wheel lofts. But his track record for the Mae Street precinct for the LPD was not so good. If I recall correctly, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, they ended up vacating that building because it had a leaky roof. It had rats and mice. It had black mold. It was not in a good working condition. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, whether or not he would maintain these at the standard we would want them to be at. Secondly, I seriously think it's time we draw a line in the sand, hold ourselves to it, and not give any more developments of any nature, any abatements, any pilots, any brownfields. And you just know he's going to be asking for some of those somewhere down the line. Third, my concern is that this is a high visibility, prime retail established place. And it's a gentrification effort that's going to remove 40-some low income, moderate affordable housing from the market and replace them with, not, as he said himself, not affordable, but quote, attainable housing. So we're pushing out the very people we've been talking about the most here for so long, people that can't afford housing and need clean, safe, affordable housing. These old houses may not be his standard of what he thinks is, you know, approved and appropriate. But for the people living in those homes, they're homes. And they maybe have been there 40, 50, 60 years. And they're looking at maybe at potentially someday passing those homes on to their children or their grandchildren. And all of those opportunities go out the window with this gentrification. So I just encourage you to look very closely at this, to keep in mind what his track record has been or could be, and to not give any more dollars to any more developers for any purpose. We've heard from the police today. We've heard from the fire chief today. They are, they're operating in the red, essentially, a danger zone. We can't afford to lose any more income tax or property tax to help a profit of a developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, and then Erica Lynn.
Hello again, Mike Lynn. I wanted to speak on the fiscal year budget, obviously, and what was talked about in Cal. It pertains to the mayor's office and the budget coming out of there. But firstly, Brian, you're right. He was asking a question about all these people that have come in here and complained about what's not being done. And I felt like what he was asking was directed at the mayor's office and with Price Dobrnik, you know, and asking the things that he asked about. Because nobody was for that pilot. Nobody was for that, that building or anything. So I think the three council members that did the research and said no to that were absolutely right, and the community said the same thing. Not just because of the pilot aspect, but what are you doing putting that type of housing in between two major streets? And there's always this conversation about where are the kids going to play? But anyways, Price Dobrnik asking for that position scares me because the mayor's another $100,000 over here in the mayor's budget. But I'm sure HRCs has a job like that somewhere in there. If we really knew what they did, we still don't know what they do. I mean, that question came up again about what they might possibly do. But anyways, you're right. There's all these donations, or excuse me, that these relationships do matter. And so when you talked about pulling those two members off of the boards and commissions and just having that conversation, those relationships do matter. When people are donating to processes, when people are put in place, and we don't recognize those relationships, I feel like it's a derelict of duty. And it shouldn't seem like you're off-putting by asking that question and saying something about it. And you shouldn't say at the end of it, well, I'll probably still vote him through. No, have your concerns met and say, no, we need something different in there. That's a conflict of interest to somebody as a chaplain, as a firefighter, working in the fire department. Our chaplain was loved. And so if a complaint came in against one of us, he's going to defend. And we don't need that on the police commission. LPD, and, excuse me, first off, let's get to the mayor's office in this situation here. The authority that she kept speaking of, I think we need, again, to look back into the charter. I mean, I don't know what authority she's been given. I don't know what authority Shelby Fair has been given, but we need to look back into that because obviously, her resume speaks volumes to what her ability is to do this job. And when we get the charter changed to a strong, or away from a strong mayor, then maybe we bring her in for a conversation about being a city manager. But at this point in time, that's not what we're asking for. She's an assistant. So we need the mayor to step up in those circumstances. But anyways, I think we need to work on that budget, that $1 million or whatever it is that he's allocated. Let's narrow that down to what is actually needed. LPD and LFD in this conversation that came around, you know, not having people work here or not wanting to, like, we got to recognize who we are as a city, man. If you just Google Lansing, or LPD, or LFD, let's fix the relationship we have with our community. I wouldn't want to work here. If it wasn't for the fact that I live in this city, once I got trained, I would have went to someplace else. Grand Rapids? I wouldn't even have to do medic in Grand Rapids. Nobody wants to work here because the first thing they do is Google this city before they put in the application. And they recognize that we're in shambles. So like, let's focus on that. There's so much more I'll get to in a second, three minutes. We might think about raising this to five minutes also. Other municipalities are doing that with no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Nancy Malo.
A second more time, so I'm going to try to get my wind here. I want to get this all out. Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. I want to talk about item seven, the public budget hearing. I definitely value those. I want to kind of front load with that. But I also want to just point out that if that public hearing does not directly address and discuss the looming budget deficit that we will be facing, the one that we were already facing, had ARPA funds not come, and would have undoubtedly had some very major effects to actual services in our city, the fact that there are absolutely no changes to the current budget by way of spending across departments, and there are no concrete plans to address it. If it doesn't talk about the fact that we will be facing this exact same crisis, and most likely worse in '24, '25, then we might not even, we might as well not even hold it. Public budget hearings are extremely important. I value them. Again, it gives opportunities for people to get a better understanding of the proposed budget, and it gives them an opportunity to give their feedback. The problem, they're much more well-attended than these are. Committee of the whole meetings where the department budget presentations are had, and they go into more detail like we saw tonight. That budget hearing ends up being a presentation. So I ask that you all, please, remember that from now until then, that what you all decide to do or not to do regarding this very static budget that is preceding a future budget that demands our attention now, we are not in a good place as a city on so many different levels. And I'm really afraid of what is to come. I was reminding in one of the participatory budget meetings that I attended, a question was asked by Mike, are we outpacing what we brought in? Like, what's our spending looking like? The response was really dry, and it was kind of curt. Our budget always has to be balanced. That's wonderful. To be clear, a balanced budget means expenses and revenues are equal. That's accounting 101. It does not mean that our budget is healthy. It doesn't mean that it is sustainable. So the million dollar question for me is always going to be, how? How did we balance that budget? So what was impacted? What will be impacted? What is going to be different next year? We don't get to know that. Because at those meetings, the correlation and causation, when the impact happens, is difficult to make later after the fact. So what difficult decisions are going to have to be made next year, this time of year, to balance the budget? Since this budget is not only being balanced on one-time windfalls, but it's also not addressing anything at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Malo, followed by Stan Shuck.
Nancy Malo, Eastside. I am here to speak on Mr. Heffler's development. I don't support it at all. I attended the public, I mean, the planning board meeting. And I felt very sorry for the residents that were in attendance because they were ignored. I mean, seriously, they were ignored. And when you have the chair of the planning board make the announcement that, I know Mr. Heffler, I've known him for years, and I'm going to support anything that he brings to this board, that was out of line, totally. And his comment, Mr. Heffler's own comment regarding that the property wouldn't hold foundations for the houses that are there because of the volume of traffic and the heavy vehicles, yet he wants to build two and three-story townhouses on this same property? No. Before I left today, on the news, we have another 344 properties that were just pink-tagged. Before we go and put any more into this city, we need to take care of what we have. Because we're going to have more people out on the streets with no place to go. And as far as the budget, there has to be some drastic changes to it. I went through it. I sent out to probably over 100 people my version of the budget. And miscellaneous operations expenses, the amount of money that each department gets to spend under $5,000, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. Nothing against our mayor, nothing against anybody. We don't need two deputy mayors. We don't need a deputy director. We have some serious, serious changes that have to be made in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck.
Good evening, Stan Shuck, South Lansing. I want to speak on a couple of things that happened in the budget. First of all, Dennis mentioned, you guys, we have four sweepers. One of them is from 1984. You do the math on that. It's red tagged. It's dangerous bioshock. You have to wear respiratory equipment to even operate the thing. So you might as well paint it white and put it in a park for the kids to climb on. Also, at the last meeting, there was misinformation, point blank. The mayor's assistant looked you all in the eye and said, hey, I want to report that the compost is... Uh, the mayor's assistant looked you all in the eye and said, hey, I wanna report that the compost is up and running smoothly and we're on time. But next week it might be a little late cuz one of the trucks is down. But, uh, I'm sure she didn't have the knowledge to know that none of those positions were filled. None of those. And as far as the fee goes, in Michigan, state law is if you collect a fee for a service, a material, uh, or, or some sort of work, that that money must be put into a trust and can only be used for that purpose. We established tonight that that money is not being used as intended and hasn't been for several years. It also covers catch basin cleaning. That hasn't been done for years. If it, if it has, prove me wrong. Let's see the records. So that money, also a fee, is not being used. The sweeping is also subsidized by the compost fee. That is not being done. The operator even gave testimony, even put something on Facebook saying he was called out of our area and put in another area, so they never even came back and swept our area. He had Andy down here blowing smoke, saying it'd be in the spring. Well, here we are, spring, almost summer, and our area is terrible. Brian, you just ran in a Boston Marathon. Put your running shoes on and run through my neighborhood, brother. You'll break your ankle. It's loose gravel. Loose gravel is a hazard. It's on the city in Lansing's form as a hazard. I filled them out for 22, 23 years. It's a hazard. It needs to be swept up. The catch basins also, I don't even know if you have the equipment to do it. That stuff is wrecking the vax. I don't know if we have honey dippers. But the point is, all of that, if it's not used for the purpose and put into a trust, it's called commingling of funds. It's a felony in the state of Michigan. If you collect a fee for anything, it's gotta be put into trust and can only be used for that purpose and no other purpose whatsoever. So where are the millions? $9.9 million a year. And you just raised it four bucks and didn't tell anybody about it. Where's the money?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we are to the referral of the public hearings. Um, item seven, the budget.
The, we'll go back to committee of the whole.
Item eight, SLU one of 2023.
Development and planning.
Item nine, Z1 2023.
Development and planning.
Item 10, Z3 2023.
Development and planning.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So before us, we have a tribute in recognition of the Eastside Neighborhood Organization 50th anniversary. Congratulations, by the way. A tribute in recognition of the Jasmine Miles Memorial Foundation. We have, uh, multiple reappointments. I'm not gonna go through them all, but they're for various commissions throughout the city. We have a workers' compensation settlement that is a redemption of $10,200. That is WC 206-2876-01922-001. And then we have another workers', workers' compensation settlement, WC 206-2876-01409, and that is a redemption of $3,700. We have a liquor license transfer. Padsenob LLC requests for a Class C license and a Sunday sales AMPM social district dance entertainment extended hours, SDM permits at 221 South Washington Avenue. Street decertification portions of Jerome Street, Holm Street, Malcolm X Street, Aurelius, Main Connector, Regent Street, Schoolcraft Drive totaling 4,780 feet. We have a reappointment for Mr. Michael McKissick as an at-large member of the Economic Development Corporation and Tax and Increment Finance Authority, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire February 28, 2029. And last but not least, we have a reappointment for Mr. Calvin Jones as an at-large member of the Economic Development Corporation Tax and Increment Finance Authority, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire February 28, 2029.
Uh, with that, on our consent agenda, on our consent agenda, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action item 20.
Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. So I'd move the resolution, uh, for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, CDBG Annual Action Plan.
We have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 21, claim 1931.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so we, um, actually took this through city operations. Uh, Mr. Spadeford is the chair, uh, but he had, uh, was called away essentially tonight, uh, so I'm reporting out on it. Um, we did meet on this issue April 24th, the claim it was not present, present, sorry. Uh, we did have, uh, Mr. Walter Allen, who is the lead housing inspector and interim co-compliance manager with us. Uh, and he spoke to the timeline of the process, the notices given, uh, the work that was done by our contractor, uh, spoke to, uh, the payment the city made to the contractor, uh, the fact that our admin, uh, fees, uh, were, um, leveraged correctly. And that really, you know, the process was, was followed with fidelity. Um, we took a look at the pictures, um, we took a look at the invoices, uh, and the work that was essentially built was work done. Um, and we, as again, uh, as a city, uh, we did, uh, have to make this contractor whole. Uh, and so, um, and it, and essentially what we do as part of the appellate process is we're checking boxes, uh, to make sure that everything was applied with fidelity. Uh, and in this case, um, it was. And so with that being said, we, um, are moving, or I should say, we are recommending a denial. So the, uh, resolution in front of you, uh, is actually for a denial of $1,127 in trash fees for 3308 Mulley Street.
We have a motion in front of us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
Item 22, the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority bylaws.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, what we have before us is the, um, the resolution to accept and approve the bylaws. Lansing Gateway Corridor Authority has already been established, and this is just a resolution approving the bylaws.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
And item 23 is a grant acceptance from the Michigan Eagle for the Rural Electronics Recycle Grant.
And I'm passing the gavel to the Vice President. You get to call on me.
All right. Pr- Council President Wood.
Thank you. Uh, this came up in Ways and Means. What this is, is a grant acceptance for $15,000. Uh, we would be using $7,500, um, per year for two years. Uh, what this does is it, uh, comes from the electronic recycling grant from the Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy. And in essence, what it does is they give us the money and we give it back to them, um, based on the electronics and things that we collect during our recycle drama. Uh, there is no city map, so with that, I would move this grant acceptance.
Okay. With that being said, is there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passed.
We are to reports from council committees. Uh, we have a, uh, the Committee on Public Safety, Red Tag and Housing Update.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein. And for council members, we do have that in your packet. And at the end, uh, if you could move that that be entered into the public record.
Absolutely. All right, so, uh, folks know that, and if you guys look at that, uh, what I'm going to do is actually read, uh, from the report. I am not going to read all seven pages, I promise. Uh, but in terms of, uh, kind of the preamble, it says that, "At the special meeting of the Committee of the Whole, uh, on red tags and housing held April 3rd, the Public Safety Committee was charged with continuing the discussion and collaborative work with myriad, uh, departments and city employees on the topic and then engaging in monthly committee reports. The committee began meeting on this issue at its April 4th meeting and identified all unanswered questions and commitments that were made during the April 3rd Special Committee of the Whole meeting. We sent those items on to the various departments with jurisdiction and began meeting with them at our April 18th meeting. We had another meeting with respective departmental leaders on May 2nd. As a result of those meetings, we prepared a document as a committee, uh, that presents the answers that we have to date. We have organized them by department and provided meeting notes and answers to date after each unique question. We will continue to meet until all answers are provided and we are satisfied that our processes and procedures are such that we can no longer call, uh, this housing emergency a crisis." Um, before I go through how we kind of organize this and maybe just touch on a few of the items, um, I do wanna thank, uh, our departmental directors that have been on hand. Um, I wanna thank, uh, Law, uh, that's really been just an incredible guide on the side, a number of, um, senior level management, uh, individuals. Um, we have, again, been meeting on a bi-weekly, uh, basis. Uh, we've been trying to provide questions, uh, to, uh, to folks prior to, uh, and we certainly appreciate, uh, that most of them, uh, have showed up on a bi-weekly basis and are taking this, this issue seriously. Um, with that being said, um, I'm just gonna go through a few items, um, that I think might be of interest. And then what I like to do is give folks, cuz I, I do realize the committee, we didn't actually convey this until yesterday. Um, and the reason is that we were, uh, looking at meeting minutes, we were looking at, um, videos, uh, and trying to determine, um, kind of the evolution of, uh, because many of the answers that were not provided at the April 18th meeting were provided at the May 2nd meeting. Or, um, additional details, essentially, were provided. So we wanted to make sure that the information was correct before we conveyed it. Uh, so what I like to do is actually give you guys an opportunity, um, to digest this, read through this, um, and then potentially either, uh, well, actually at the next, um, committed report meeting, if you will, which will be two, uh, two meetings from here. Um, we certainly will entertain, uh, questions and, and make sure that you guys have what you want, or what you need, I'm sorry. Uh, so if you look at economic development and planning, this is page one. Um, I did want to, um, take note of the first item. Uh, we did ask the question, how many months are we behind in rental inspections? And what is our plan to address? Uh, we think this is an incredibly important question. Uh, we had heard, um, a number of different answers from a number of different people. Uh, but we are fairly certain at this point, we are about four to six weeks, uh, from registration to inspection. Uh, we are, in terms of our lead housing inspector and our interim co-compliance manager, who's Walter Allen, uh, he does believe this is, uh, appropriate timing. Uh, and we were, um, uh, assured that landlords are not, uh, supposed to move tenants in without certification, contrary to what some, uh, believe. Uh, and frankly, we, we've actually had folks tell us that. Um, so to have that confirmed for us in that meeting was incredibly important. Uh, the failure to register is a hundred and fifty dollar, uh, fine right now. We actually are looking at, uh, the draft is done. Uh, Mr. Jordan Hankewitz, who is our new, uh, Director of Economic Development and Planning, um, is looking to approve hopefully, um, this, this RFP, this draft RFP, um, for basically a fine and fee study, uh, across departments. Um, we are looking at whether or not that still covers the cost of doing business, because that was actually put together back in 2005, or established back in 2005. Um, if you look at the last item on page one, it says, how many pink-tagged and red-tagged units do we currently have? Uh, if you'll recall, um, at the beginning of really this effort, we had roughly a 711, I believe it was. Um, at this time, we have 290 pink-tagged, uh, units. We have 682 red-tagged units, so we're down 29, uh, red-tagged units. Uh, 501 of those 682, uh, red-tagged units are in the neat team monitoring and assessment program. And one of the new things that we are doing, we used to, uh, give our code officers some measure of discretion when they were out in the field. Uh, and if they felt that there was some measure of work being done on these red tags, uh, then they were able to suspend, um, the, the neat team process, um, but particularly the fee that was assessed. Um, they have, I, I think at really the, um, urging of the council, um, they have decided to, to stop that process. Um, and if folks are, if they have red-tagged, uh, units and they're in that neat team, they stay in that neat team until the work is done and that property is brought up to code. If you guys look at page two very quickly, um, and if you look at the third, uh, bullet point, uh, there was a question about a rental inspection checklist, uh, that has been in the works since 2020. Uh, what we wanted to ensure is that we were out there scientifically and with fidelity, um, checking things and making sure that, uh, and no matter who the code officer was, um, that they were out there doing, uh, things the right way, uh, and consistently. Um, and we were told that, uh, it had been actually finished, uh, quite some time ago. Um, and since, uh, this kind of renewed conversation with regards to red tags about three months ago, um, they have actually now been applying, uh, that checklist when out in the field. If you look at the third bullet point, um, we asked if we had created a checklist for neat team monitoring of red tag units, uh, and how are we, uh, recording and reporting? Again, uh, we are, we have changed the process. And so if you are in that, uh, red-tagged, uh, neat team monitoring program, you stay in that program, uh, which again, I, I personally, I don't wanna speak for the group, um, but I personally think, uh, is the appropriate, um, procedure. Um, so in any event, um, that, that has changed. If you take a look at page three, uh, in the second bullet point, um, no, sorry, the, yeah, the second bullet point, says, has the job description for code enforcement manager been reviewed and approved? And will the job be posted? Uh, the job, the job description, sorry, has been, uh, reviewed and approved, and this position has since been posted. Uh, our understanding is applications are being received, uh, those will be vetted, and hopefully we will have, uh, higher in the near future. If you look at the sixth bullet point, uh, this was something that we asked, uh, about in terms of our code officers and their ability to stay out in the field. Uh, we asked the question whether or not we had restructured the daily schedule for code officers. Um, we, and, and I thought this was important for folks to know, um, cuz there's been a lot of conversation about what, what is it that our code officers are expected to do on a daily basis? What does their schedule look like? How much are they out in the field, um, versus in the office, um, doing computer work and the like? Um, so we, the current schedule, uh, for phone hours is eight to nine AM. So all of our code officers are actually in the office from eight to nine AM. Uh, they go out to the field, but they are back, uh, at 12, uh, and they are in the office from 12 to 1. Uh, they do have scheduled inspections at 10 AM, another at 11 AM, another at 2 PM, and the last at 3:15 PM. So they have four scheduled, uh, inspections a day. Lunch is taken from 1 to 2 PM, and after the last inspection, officers are expected back in the office by 4 PM, uh, for office hours. Officers are also squeezed, uh, are asked to squeeze in safety inspections, rechecks and the like when they can. Um, one of the things that we are talking about as a committee with this particular department is how do we, um, improve the efficiencies of actually engaging number one citizens, um, doing paperwork, filing paperwork, and when I say doing paperwork, filing paperwork actually on your computer. Uh, but also, how are we interfacing with BSNA? How are we allowing them to interface with BSNA when they're out in the field? Uh, because frankly, we have a concern that that is a lot of time, uh, for our code officers to be inside of the office, particularly when we have the number of rental dwellings we have, uh, the number of inspections that we have, um, scheduled, um, and the number of red tag units, the, the amount of court appearances, the, you know, the, the list goes on. Uh, so that is something that we're continuing to take a look at. If you look at page five, um, we have had quite a bit of conversation with our housing abudsmen. If you look at the last bullet point, um, the question was asked, has the housing abudsmen or, and/or LPD social worker been out to red-tag properties, uh, to speak with inhabitants? Um, I know that was of, uh, special interest to this particular group. Uh, we also asked, uh, what the result, uh, was if so, and what is the plan moving forward? And how will the housing abudsmen, uh, learn of tag units in the future? Um, the housing abudsmen, our understanding has never connected with the LPD. Um, had, they did at our May 2nd meeting, um, discussed the fact that they had been out to six units. Uh, none of the inhabitants, uh, asked for assistance. However, Mr. McDonald did provide information on things such as the emergency home rehabilitation program. Of the six, two were identified as renters, one had a land contract, and two were homeowner occupied. Some stated that they weren't aware that the unit was red-tagged. Others claimed, uh, they were living across the street with a neighbor. The housing abudsmen did ask about permits, and if you have pulled permits and seem to be working toward compliance, Mr. McDonald did not connect with the LPD or Law or any other department on the red-tagged properties that were inhabited, although they were informed it was illegal to live in these units. The landlords of the renters were not contacted, nor was the information handed over to the, to the LPD for investigation. The housing abudsmen was asked to continue to investigate resources and get back with the committee ASAP. Uh, and, and frankly, I was, I was in Dallas at the time. Uh, my daughter had a robotics, daughter's had a robotics competition, so I did watch back on the tape, um, to help put these notes together. Um, and I, and I will say, um, I was a little bit concerned. I, I really appreciate the work out in the field, but the fact that there was no follow-up, no inter-departmental coordination, no, I mean, it, it was, I was sitting there almost yelling at the screen, then what was the point? What, why did we even go out into the field? Um, so I, I hope that, um, and I certainly will, uh, and we will certainly continue to push that in committee, uh, but I certainly hope that we develop that, that process and those relationships a bit further, so that we're actually out there empowering people, uh, and helping and supporting people. Um, let's see, lastly, if you look at page seven, this was for the administration. Uh, one of the questions that we asked, uh, was whether or not, um, after looking at CBAs, uh, we understood why employees had not, um, had evaluations in the last 15 years. We also asked whether or not we were taking steps to implement a system for evaluating employees and establishing professional development opportunities. Um, I know that in speaking with some of my colleagues in the council, that this was something that was incredibly concerning to them, so I wanted to highlight this. Uh, it says that, uh, in terms of your meeting notes, uh, the mayor's planning to implement annual eval, uh, evaluations. The administration is looking into the best practices and processes, and a recommendation from Jane to the mayor is forthcoming. Is that correct? Okay, so we look forward to an update in the near future. Uh, and then lastly, um, this was huge for us as a committee. Uh, one of the things that we wanna ensure, and I think, uh, when we were charged as a committee, uh, to continue this conversation, that was about accountability. And so one of the things that we asked, uh, was for a timeline to be established for all rem- And so one of the things that we asked was for a timeline to be established for all remedies that had been discussed. We in committee explained that there were a number of things that the administration had committed to, examples such as recommendations for ordinance changes, top-down review of policies and procedures and the like. And for, again, accountability's sake, the council would like to see a timeline that can be applied to determine whether goals and objectives are being met. Mr. Sessa stated she would work on this. And so at the next committee meeting, my hope is that we will have some semblance of a timeline that we can actually start to refer to and determine whether or not we're hitting the mark and whether or not we're being effective with this process. Again, I hope that you guys take an opportunity to read through this. I want to thank Councilwoman Wood, as well as Councilman Cost. They have been absolutely fantastic. I find myself kind of sitting back and just listening to them, kind of really going in and working with the respective departmental leaders on ideas and the like, so I think this is just a tremendous committee to actually do this work. So I appreciate you all, and look forward to future reports. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add to this is two points. One, when we talked to the department about how we were going to look at a metric on whether it's how many red tags we had or pink tags, I think one of the things that we heard from the department, and I think council members on the committee agreed too, it's not necessarily the number of tags as it is the duration of tags. We all understand that properties go in and out of being red-tagged. You know, one day they're tagged, and two days later they've been complied with and they're untagged, but the property next door might be tagged. I think one of the things that we had was, we had 21 properties that we had identified that were over a decade old on the list, and those are the ones that we've been working with the department to come up with answers for. So I think that's important to bring that forth as we look at this.
And I, just very quickly, I think the other piece that I appreciated is that in terms of this tech tool, this dashboard, that they want that public-facing for transparency. And so that folks actually know on any given day where we're at with regards to red tags and pink tags and neat team monitoring and the like, because I think that, number-one, transparency is key, but I think that holds all of us as elected officials accountable to making sure that the work continues. Thank you.
And so you'd like to move this report?
Oh, sorry. I would like this report to be placed on file.
As part of the public record.
Oh, sorry. I would like to, I would move that this be made part of the public record.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, excuse me, I appreciate this report. It dovetails really nicely in a continuation of kind of what we did the year before, but this is really good. I guess I still continue to be concerned that there does not appear to be a pathway for folks to reach out to the city attorney to do that additional type of enforcement. We've heard from the city attorney that we have appropriate toolboxes, but that in order for him to do that, he needs to have proper referrals. And so if we're not getting the proper referrals, and I mentioned this to our new Director of Economic Development and Planning and also his deputy, you know, there needs to be a very straightforward referral process, and we're not getting that. And so I'm really hoping that, and I see that that's part of your recommendation as well, I'm really hoping that, you know, later on that we can ask that question and know that there's been established this type of procedure, because if not, they just, we really get nothing done, and we're spinning our wheels. And so to the extent that we can start that process and move forward with enforcement, maybe that will serve as a deterrent for additional landlords, but we do need to have our frontline staff, you know, do the additional, do the recommended referrals that, so that Jim can do, you know, start the process.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I'm going to take some personal privilege. We have, and that is discussed here in this report, and I don't think we are where we need to be, but I will tell you that Lisa, our city attorney's office, they've done a tremendous amount of work on this. And I'm just going to go ahead and put around the spot. If we could, Jim, just have Lisa come up to the dais very quickly and talk just a little bit about this first batch, you know, how we're working with the police department to ensure that...
Why don't you take Councilmember...
Thank you, I appreciate it. To ensure that with future batches, that the reports are written in such a way that you all actually have, sorry, what you need to work with to start enforcing on this issue. Thank you.
Sure, so we received a first batch of police reports. Code had reached out to LPD with a list of red-tagged properties, and there were a number of police reports forwarded to my office that were missing some information regarding the knowledge of the landlord versus the knowledge of the person residing in the home. So we have worked closely with Code to have them fashion the material that they give to LPD in a way that allows LPD to quickly do these checks of these residences and get the materials that we need while still doing all of their other duties. So we have worked very closely at this point with LPD and with Code to make sure that we are coming up with a process that is efficient and that is effective, and it gives our office the facts that we need to be able to move forward with some different enforcement.
Perfect.
Now simply, we asked you to come to the dais, because we do, we do a ton of work in committee. People, although we're trying to make that more transparent, people don't always see that work. And I love being able to put a face with the people that are doing a tremendous amount of work on our behalf and on the city's behalf, so thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you haven't had a chance to sign in with Grace, we'll give you about another 30 seconds to jump up, and in the meantime, we are to referral items.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
You have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have, from the City Clerk, Minutes of the Boards and Commissions.
Placed on file.
General Fonstadt's report.
Committee of the Hole and Internal Auditor.
Employment vacancy factor report.
The same. Committee of the Hole and Internal Auditor.
Fireworks display license for the Independence Day celebration.
City Operations.
From the mayor, the appointment of John Scott to the Board of Public Service.
City Operations.
The appointment of Laura Stokan to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board.
Development and Planning Committee.
An application for designation as Pure Michigan Trail and Trail Town.
City Operations.
Make Safe or Demolish, two items relative to 3421 North Cedar Street.
Public Safety Committee.
Two items relative to Make Safe or Demolish for 131 Jackson Street.
Public Safety Committee.
And two items relative to Make Safe or Demolish to 1722 Denora Street.
Public Safety.
The sole source purchase for the Economic Development and Planning Department for Michael Ladas and Associates for employment consulting and advising on the hiring of Chief Building Inspector.
Lees and Means and Internal Auditor.
Communications and Petitions, a claim appeal from Jennifer Quenby for $7,500 and trash fees at 3517 Pleasant Grove.
City Operations and Internal Auditor.
Claim appeal, Yolanda Wilson for $7190 in trash fees at 1017 North Large.
Isn't that the...
Nope.
No, it's the next one, I'm sorry. City Operations and Internal Auditor.
And then item 41, we're pulling from this agenda and sending it back to the Claims Review Committee. So next we have an affidavit of disclosure, Aaron Bittendorf of the Public Service Department.
Okay, it's board.
And a notice from the Liquor Control Commission of a transferred Class C license and its transferring location, but it will end up at 3150, 3160, and 3170 East Michigan Avenue.
City Operations.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Garza.
I make a motion to excuse Councilman Spatterford.
Have a motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
We're to remarks by councilmembers.
Councilmember remarks. Councilmember who's...
I'm sorry, I need to, just very quickly, this report is already outdated. We did have three additional units, or 300, sorry, additional units that were pink-tagged near John Lee and Waverly as part of the Sycamore Townhome property. This is, this property's been in issue for a number of years. We have worked with a number of different property owners and management companies. Used to be Woodside Metals or Arbor Point, and it is now Sycamore Townhomes. In any event, the conditions of this property for the past several years have been egregiously bad. There are certain parts of this property you would not even think you were in Lansing, frankly, or in the United States, a first-world country. It's that bad. We've been in front of 54th District Court on this, fines have been assessed and handed down, nothing has really moved the dial. So we did get out and pink-tag. There is, my understanding, and so this is actually to the mayor and to Jim, there is a meeting that I'm aware of that will take place, I believe it's this Wednesday at 3:30. I would like to know the location of that particular meeting, because I would like to be there. This is between the property owner, law, my understanding, as well as economic development and planning. Thank you.
This, Arbor Point, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, thank you, President Wood. Where was this at again? Arbor Point?
Yes, yes.
It's the old Arbor Point.
Yep, the old Arbor Point. So it was Arbor Point, then it was Woodside Metals, and now it's Sycamore.
Fifteen times.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, other councilmember comments.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore. No remarks, okay.
Okay, then to the public comment, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Stan Shuck.
Okay, we've been hearing forever about the budget for police and fire and how strapped they are, how shorthanded they are. I contest, I can attest to their shortage of staff at least two weeks ago, when 18 or 16 people should have been on duty and eight were on duty. So we know there's a strong issue there that has to be dealt with. I'm going to throw out an idea for consideration, maybe just even just starting a conversation about whether or not it's viable, and please take it as an attempt to look at something not like, oh, we can't do that because, but instead look at it like, well, maybe if we talk it through, there might be a way we could do this. We know that a lot of the fire department runs, the paramedic runs, are what you might call frequent flyer or nuisance runs, or medical taxi runs. Basically, somebody stubs their toe, they've got a migraine, they have the flu, they broke an ankle or whatever, and so they have no other way to get to the ER, because they can't get a bus at 3:00 in the morning, they can't afford an Uber, they don't have any taxis left in town. So what if we, instead of using an entire paramedic crew and a full ambulance to respond to those, what if we developed a fleet of medical taxis that only dealt with those nuisance small minor runs and were staffed strictly by EMS staff instead of tying up our paramedics and an entire ambulance rig? Is that something we could think about? Is it something we could talk about? Is there any way that that could potentially be viable to pick up these folks in a medical taxi instead of tying up an ambulance and a crew? Just a thought.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck, followed by Grace Haley.
Stan Shuck, South Lansing, I want to talk about a couple of things. One thing, Patricia, you brought up sweepers, you took that up. And one of the issues with your sweepers is right now, two of them are down. One of them's called the Global, that's a manufacturer, they have a manufacturer's issue, they're trying to engineer a fix, who knows how long that'll take. The other one that's down has broken spring, it's been broken for quite some time. Well, one of your problems is that since Mark Parker retired, some of you know him through the retirement board and everything else, but that's what he did, 40 hours a week, eight hours a day, specifically worked on the sweeper fleet each and every day to keep it up and operating and on the road. That hasn't been done since Mark left. You need to dedicate somebody in fleet services specific to the sweepers, day in, day out, 40 hours a week, keep them on the road. That's what you gotta do, plain and simple. I think we're all feeling the pain of the seasonals, you know, as far as you're getting applicants, you know? Those were your applicants, that was your pool of trained applicants. Many of them had been here for years, been trained in several departments, all kinds of equipment. You know, you gave them 50 cents an hour to be backup hacker operators, and then you, not you, but they abused the situation and wouldn't let them out, you know, used them 24/7 in there. And so when they could get out, they left. This year, the processing, you had some 400 maintenance workers, went through the whole process, hands-on test, passed them with flying colors, but by the time they got processed through HR, they found other work. They're not going to wait, especially with the benefits and wages that we're offering. So, you know, that's just not going to happen. You know, you're paying United, what was it, $588,000 a year to maintain the parks and the cemeteries? And I got to wonder what that kind of money a year, is Washington Park still free to them? They still get to use that for absolutely nothing, our parkland, our building? You know, that'd be better served as a community center or something. Obviously, they're making enough money, they could rent a facility, an empty facility somewhere in town. So we need to think about those options. And I don't know if you've ever heard of the book called The Color of Law, but if you haven't, you might want to familiar yourselves with it, familiarize yourselves with it. And also, more people filed with the DOJ just recently for retaliation by the city. You know, at the settlement with the police officer, plainly said on page 10, you gotta put some...
Thank you.
Classes together for your employees.
Next, we have Grace Haley, followed by Jonathan Evans.
Thank you. I am a lifelong member of this community. I taught in the Lansing School District for a lot of years. I've seen people come and go, and I give this council a lot of credit. I've seen all the work that you are burdened with to do, and I am grateful for that. What I'm here for today is so that you do not forget something that the Nation Outside Group is really interested in having, and that is housing for returning citizens and making it easier for them to get a place to live. I know people are concerned about public safety and returning citizens, they're fearful of their returning to their criminal ways, but I have seen a lot of people where I work at Northwest Initiative who come in fearful of what they have to do now that they're home and they can't find a place to live. One young man I spoke to today, and I don't know his full situation, but he's living in a closet, and I was shocked to hear him say that. And with the help of our community passing this ordinance for safe and just place to live, it would really be helpful for those people. I myself have a son who is incarcerated. He came home once and looked at me and said, Mom, it would be easier for me to go back to prison, because he couldn't get what he needed. He was homeless, even though he had me to live with, but he wanted to be independent. And it is such a serious, serious thing, and I just don't want this ordinance to fall between the cracks. I was here three months ago to speak on it. I went to a community of the hole to hear what was being done and was told that we're putting it, we need to do some more and to study it. And I don't, I haven't heard of it since, and I would like to have it brought before you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Evans and then Dinah DeWald.
So I am also here to speak in support of the ordinance. So before the pandemic, I worked as a full-time housing case manager for a year here in Lansing, mostly working with adults with disabilities in permanent supportive housing, so the most vulnerable people. By far, the best part of my job was the relationship I was able to develop with my clients. People have been in Lansing for decades, people with big families and small families, people who love Lansing, who are kind, who are resilient, and many of these folks did also have a criminal record. They had formerly served time, but they were past that. So I want to pause and just say, there's already many barriers to finding housing, to finding affordable housing. Number one, Mayor Shore, not enough affordable housing. Number two, discriminatory practices based on race, based on citizenship status and other things. Number three, discriminatory practices based on income. So that's really important because that's the way property owners get around discriminating against people experiencing poverty, and sometimes along racial lines as well. So people living paycheck to paycheck are priced out of properties because three times the income, which is a common requirement, is an astronomical request. So then, let's add inflation. And then, let's add that you have a felony conviction. There is almost no housing for you. The few places that accept you for housing are in high-crime areas with violence and drugs. So when we tell people that serving time is how they make right, but then they have nowhere to live and nowhere to work, and I've been in a situation where I've appealed the decision to reject them, and we sit down and we write a letter about how they've changed and their life, decades of their life, and we put it into one page, and then they deny it because there's no accountability, there's no recourse for them. So that's why I'm here to speak on that, in support of that. Yeah, so $150 for failure to certify rentals, that seems really low compared to how much they might make in one month from rent. That doesn't make any sense, those are completely wrong numbers for each other. That seems crazy. So my experiences with red tagging was that, you know, it doesn't help when you red-tag a place if there's not enough affordable housing. What you're doing is unhousing people while there's not enough affordable housing. So it seems like you're sort of working at it from like the backward, trying to crawl back to the forward. You need to be, you need to be thinking forward about how much affordable housing there is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dinah DeWald, followed by Daniel Arnold.
I'm also speaking today about, in support of the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance. Everything today, it seems like, has been about housing. It's a huge crisis, and I know that you all know that. I know so many people, everybody that I know is struggling with housing right now, struggling to find places that they can live in, that aren't infested with bats, with roaches, that are affordable and still places that you can raise a baby that's, you know, safe to live in. And hearing about, hearing the report on the red tags made me think of what happened to me a few weeks ago, when I got a call, we got a ticket from code enforcement. There was really no explanation on the ticket, what, why we got it for, so we called. Indoor furniture outside was what we got the ticket for. We look outside, and we're like, okay, so we have some chairs on our porch that we're using because there's a lot of people who live in this house and we like to hang out on our porch. So we have a code enforcement officer come to our house, check it out, and say, no, you're not allowed to have those. Call again, can we get some kind of, you know, referrals, some kind of, visited twice, and spent, I'm sure, over an hour of his time that day. And I, this was a few weeks ago, in the middle of this crisis that is happening with all these red-tagged homes and people not, basically, the department being a mess. And so it just seems like you're going to need to get the entire department figured out. You need a staff person who's checking, you need to put the staff time into actually figuring out how to get landlords to do what they're supposed to be doing, rather than penalizing renters who are doing things that are not high priority. It makes no sense to spend an hour of someone's time in these small things. You need a staff person, like was discussed earlier, you need a staff person who's checking on developers to see if they're doing what they've promised you they're going to do. You need, you need to have someone who's doing code enforcement on landlords to see whether they're, they are discriminating on a lot of things that are already against the law. And you need to pass this Fair Chance Housing Ordinance in order to make sure that people cannot be discriminated against for being returning citizens. But that's never going to work, that's never going to actually come into reality if you don't have the staff and the accountability in the department to make sure that you can hold landlords accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Arnold, and then Mitch Rice.
Hello, everybody, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiley, good to see you all. Just thinking about what happened last night, just hitting close to home, that there was a 48-year-old who was shot dead at Ruder Park, and that is just something to think about, you know? And I noticed that state police and CSI were, you know, around the park, and it's just, it's really touches home with the homeless because they said that the guy who got shot, his name was Psycho or something, but, yeah, I'm just reflecting on that for a second here. On another note, I'm thinking about the library, the Capital Area District Library downtown. It's really a very, very nice resource for the homeless. It's practical, they got security, they got lots of staff, and they can use the computer, and there's just so many books, they can do, it's just a quiet, peaceful place where, you know, everybody from all walks of life can gather. But there's just one issue with it, and that is, for the whole building, the adult male, there's only one toilet for everybody. They used to have a basement bathroom, and for some reason, they've decided that they're going to make that unaccessible. So, you know, there could be a situation where somebody walks into that bathroom, and somebody might be just spending a lot of time in the stall, and people will be coming in and checking on the bathroom, having to go, and there's just no bathroom resource, and with so many homeless, it just seems like it's a real catastrophe, you know, to put all that burden on CADA bus stations. So I asked them what the reason for that is, and I think it was sort of like, they said they only have one security officer for the whole building, there's like all these different floors of the library, and so I really, I just want to start brainstorming and thinking about, you know, solutions to that, getting that extra bathroom, whatever it takes. Maybe, I noticed there were a lot of different librarians at booths, just like tons of librarians, so I didn't understand why there's all these different librarians just sitting there behind the desk, and then there's one security officer. It just seems, you know, maybe a second security officer, I don't know, I just, and I know I should probably go before the Board of Directors for the library and start looking into this, but it just, it just seems like a real tragedy to not have a toilet to use for the homeless at the library. I'm also hearing a lot of talking about this initiative to Fair Chance Housing. We have a lot of people representing Nation Outside and different organizations here. And I grew up and, you know, was in the riots at MSU in 99, and I really, really could have gotten felonies, but for some reason, I was spared and got my misdemeanor. Now here I am advocating for police stuff and everything, and I have this wonderful apartment at Riverfront on a housing voucher, but it's just not that way for everybody, and everybody deserves a chance. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, we have security police in this building every day, just doing a wonderful job. They're right down there at the checkpoint right now, watching you guys all and hearing this whole message from all of you, and show your support for those people who are always laboring for our safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Rice, followed by Randy Brown.
Good evening, Council President Carol Wood, Vice President Jeremy Garza, Mayor Shore, Council Member Brian Jackson, Ryan Kost, Jeffrey Brown, Council Member Patricia Spitzley. I'm here again, as you can see, with my symbol on, representing Nation Outside and the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance. Now, I've been aware of the most recent developments that you did follow through with having a proposal to the original last year's Fair Chance Housing Ordinance and some changes that are needed. And I know one of our representatives, Tony Gant, made an email back to suggest some changes. But I also know that you were working on having the state do something. So I'm asking all of you to get on with the state. Tomorrow, they're having a Fair Chance Housing meeting at the Capitol to put in things that might make it work for the whole state and get the city out of a challenge with the legal things that have stalled it. But we have to do something. Everybody deserves a fair chance. I stand up here, and I have no record whatsoever, and so I have privilege. I have privilege because I'm a white, baby boomer man that has money to get what I need, but there's a lot of people around me that don't. And I want to live with them, and I want to see them thrive, so the city has to get behind this. And I'm asking each of you to do your part and support it. And that way, our city will be one that many people will want to come to. I know we've heard things about how it's rough, and I've been on the city council in a smaller community years ago, and I know it's tough to sit up there, and you get stuck, but you also chose the leadership. You got the votes, do the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Randy Brown, followed by Jody Washington. Randy? No Randy? Okay, Jody Washington, followed by Mike Lynn.
Jody Washington, East Side, I only have a couple of things. First of all, I do want to say that I'm in favor of the Harry Hupppler development. We become very myopic in this city, and all we ever think about anymore is affordable, affordable, low income. And I'm not against affordable, but we cannot sustain our city on nothing but affordable. We have to start bringing in a higher-income earner to pay higher taxes so we can take care of our most vulnerable. And we have to start having a more holistic vision of our city, not just high-end, not just low-end. We need balance. And I am highly in favor of this development, it's in my neighborhood. People like to throw gentrification around, this is not gentrification. These houses have been empty, they are boarded up, they are horrible. And it's not okay for people to live in homes in Michigan with no insulation, no proper windows, and no proper heating. It's not okay. That is no better than a tent. So in Lansing, I don't believe we've ever had gentrification, and I really get tired of hearing that being thrown around. Having said that, everybody knows I work with the homeless, so I have a heart for the homeless. I have a heart for the felons that need a place to go. If you've done your time, you've done your time. But Lansing cannot sustain it. Emily Dvendorff, I believe, is working on an initiative for the fair housing statewide. It needs to be a statewide issue, not a Lansing issue. We also need to address affordable housing as a region. Every area that touches our border engages in exclusionary zoning. That is nothing more than modern-day redlining. They do it so they don't have to take people like us, they don't have to take low income, they don't have to do affordable housing, they don't have to do low-income housing. It isn't, I work with the homeless, I will tell you, very few are from Lansing, very few. These are not Lansing residents. I love them anyway, I'll help them anyway. But we're not looking at Lansing residents. So this needs to be an issue by this council and this administration and our state legislators to get that discriminatory exclusionary zoning outlawed. They've outlawed it in California, there's absolute precedence for it, and we have to stop looking at us as taking care of everything. We can't do it. We can do some of it, we can do our fair share, we can't do it all. One last thing, Joe McDonald said we are 69% behind on the ALIS measures for poverty. That is absolutely incorrect. He used absolute wrong data. That would be the statewide, and that would include Detroit, Saginaw. So be careful of what you believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, followed by Erica Lynn.
Thank you, Mike Lynn. I'm going to finish on my comments from earlier, about what we're not getting and what we deserve. Lansing just doesn't have any real vision, and this is why we just kind of go and fall for anything. I hate to seem like this is an attack on the mayor's office, but it truly is just, and I think what everybody was saying for the dais about this mayor's office and so on is just fact, and it's professional conversation, it shouldn't really be taken personal. So you don't have to apologize for that. But as I'm looking across the, excuse me, the budget, I'm seeing all these places where more money needs to be, right? Obviously with fire, police is whatever, but at the end of the day, there's public service, and all these places need more money. But we have these exuberant amount of money and allocation towards jobs out of this office that really, in all actuality, is costing us more money than is giving us anything back. And I talked about this when it comes to the lawsuits, it's really, it's really the biggest, in my opinion, one of the biggest threats to our budget, is all these lawsuits, whether it be for attorney's fees, whether it be to settlements, or whether it be to actual verdicts, such as mine, for a million dollars. That's our biggest, that's our biggest budgetary items that aren't really giving us anything back. And so when I look at it, I think, well, if we put a million dollars into the fire department, we'll get a fire truck. If we put a million dollars into the LPD, we'll get more officers. The amount of money that's coming out of, you know, lawsuits and Department of Justice investigations out of this mayor's office and the HR department is just costing us more and more and more money. But he's got all of these positions up here that are supposed to be rectifying and making sure we don't get to this point. So we're not getting what we deserve out of that ask. So the only thing you guys can do as council is cut it back, period. Don't ask all the questions, don't put people on the spot. You guys have an opportunity on May 17th, I believe the date is, to just cut it out. Give him what he can, what you believe that that office needs, give others and put money where else you think that it should go, that's going to be more palatable. $979,000, I believe, after Smurka said that MMRMA is who does our liability insurance. I went and looked up on the budget where that name would all be at, and it was on a line item of contractors that are paid, and it was $975,000 that's paid so far in fiscal year '22. That's to what he said was our lawyers and our third party that sends the money then to the lawyers, right? That's the type of money we're spending because of this office and the HR department not being able to do the job correctly. And you guys have all the evidence you need to know because those are very same names, and not her especially, because she's only been here like six months, eight months, whatever. But just that office in itself has been on multiple reports when asked, where's the racism at? What's going on? Why is this here? Well, the office of, the mayor's office is what's really doing it. My dad put a whole report in, you guys all seen it. MPHI came up here and did a whole report, the fire department did a whole report, HR Department and the mayor's office were pulling these things out. So pull from that budget, give him what he needs, put that other money, look how much money we spent trying to affect change. And Department of Justice just two months ago came in here and wiped it again. So we have to really focus on that aspect of it, so please do something about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next and finally is Erica Lynn.
I first, real quick, wanted to start off by saying earlier, because I couldn't get to it in my last comments, but I wanted to acknowledge Council Member Jackson's comments earlier in talking about the new development. I agree that he is right in the questions that he was asking, and I know that that's something that is a little cringe-worthy, but the optics of major money, power, and influence that a union of that size has, and how they use it, absolutely has implications. And I think that we shouldn't shy away from talking about it. It's not bad, it can be good, right? But there are questions that do need... But there are questions that do need to be answered, and there's things that do need to be acknowledged when we're kind of talking about that. And Price Dobernik was also absolutely right and completely spot-on in pretty much everything that he said about these developers. I mean, I couldn't, it was almost as if he took the words out of my mouth because I've stood here at this podium so many times urging you all to vote no on these pilots, or to at least establish what the return on our investment is. Not only just that, but to track it, and then also a way to hold accountability when it's not happening, when the bill of goods that they sit here with their great PowerPoints that were sold so that their profit margins can fly, and then it turns out to be rotten. What do we do then? How do we even know? We don't know. I asked in the participatory budget meetings if it's tracked, it is not. After that, the mayor gave some very long-winded comments about all these things they sign, and these things that they do, and how they're supposed to do this, and the things that they agreed to. I heard nothing that addressed adherence and compliance to that. We can all agree, we clearly have an issue with that, right? Track record, not great. We have an agreement with people that enter agreements with us, not holding up their ends of their deals. So we have now learned publicly through the questioning of department heads that we have personnel issues, that we have a lack of continued meaningful oversight of department heads, the entire red tag situation, wow, we have a serious problem with follow-through. We're literally living in a Groundhog Day of complacency, and it's led to reactive-only solutions, and it literally has created a vacuum, there is a void of the capacity to have a true vision of what our city truly needs, and for us to meet the potential of what we know that we have in our city to meet the needs of our people, we just don't have the capacity for it at this point. I also want to acknowledge the swing of the pendulum that we're experiencing, that happens with extremes, times of what a lot of people viewed as combative, right, to a really big quest for collaboration. I get it, there's room for both, but collaboration and ambicableness is not more valuable, and there is often, when there is no place for nuance and there's no place to have a consensus and status quo, the budget is one of them. You have to be the ones that ask the questions, those times are right now. If Nancy Malo can put together a budget, y'all can say no to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.